Good afternoon. Today is Monday, the 7th of June. This is our monthly Planning Commission meeting. If I can have the town clerk.
Absolutely, thank you. Ms. Brown? Ms. Call to be on? Mr. Beck? Ms. Lambert?
Here.
And Ms. Strasser? Sorry, I'm not there with you.
Who is not here?
I was wondering if the link had failed us.
We have established a forum. Our next thing is to agree to our agenda. There is one edit that you can make. Number five regarding the public hearing for zoning map amendments. We will cross that out or not be public hearing.
I have another confession. We can actually remove the minutes of that from the agenda. Or the minutes from May from the agenda. I do not have those ready for you. Apologies, guys. That's actually why I'm not there. I wanted to hide from accountability.
All right, and we will also X out number two, which is review and approval of meeting minutes of May 3rd, 2020. Do you want to have a motion to approve the agenda?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as edited.
I'll second the motion. We'll second the motion.
All votes? Not a vote. All right. Lindsay, would you care to give us a report for town council?
Sure. So town council, not too much to report on because a lot of what we'll be talking about is in conjunction with the requests that have been made by town council for zoning map amendments. The one thing that we did discuss. Wait. This is really terrible. We did not do the public hearing for the special use permit for 137 East Main Street, right? Or Dubley? I can't remember. For the apartments above Scottsville Supply.
You took Planning Commission's recommendation and called for a public hearing for next month.
For next month, okay.
Which is the 21st of June.
Yes. And that is on the update.
All right. We have Mr. Bill Eisen joining us right now. So just as an update, we, for the agenda, we removed the review and approval of meeting minutes for May 3rd. And then we also removed the public hearing for the zoning map amendments.
Oh, really?
Due to an error, we need to postpone the meeting until, or the hearing until next month.
Okay.
We need to be able, we need to advertise properly.
Matt, can you?
Sorry?
I saw it in the paper. Of course, a lot of people don't get the paper, but.
I believe you had to have it nailed up. This is. Yes.
For the local residents?
Correct.
To the adjacent properties.
Yeah.
Now, I believe we can still, if Planning Commission would like to call a special meeting on the same night as town council's regular session, we can slot you guys in ahead of them and we'd still be able to get the mailing out tomorrow and meet that requirement. So it doesn't necessarily have to get postponed until next month. It could be June 21st instead of tonight, if you all wish.
Well, we can look for that one.
I just curious, I'm not sure about being here next month or even for the next week. Is there a way I could send my notes to Planning Commission? Absolutely. For next, next meeting? Cause I wrote some things down and stuff like that. Speak them, but I could share.
Sure.
Okay, I'll do that. Just the Planning Commission Network or whatever it's. I've got a couple of them, but I don't have everybody.
The Planning Commission will send it every.
Okay.
You are welcome, because our next, the next thing on the agenda is my next form of vote. So if you would like to speak for it, then you're welcome to pass it.
Well, I already mentioned this to Matt, although I could think that the town needs to step up and take down those little black bricks everywhere about this internet. I'm not sure if that's, it might be with the ARB, but those things are, those little things are just annoying. Like ride or drive anywhere that, and I don't think that's, I just think it's unattractive to our town. That might be more for the town council here, but those, so I think that should be approved by the town and have a limit, so that they should be, like, moving both the doors of the roof. So I can.
It is, I mean, nobody's going to take them down and they're just going to be, end up in the gutter. Yeah.
I have personally thought about cutting down the CenturyLink once, but I refrained.
Yeah.
That's.
There does not appear to be anybody else in TV line. Or wait, well, I mean.
Oh.
You're right here, what? Planning Commission's having to go forward. All right, well, we'll go ahead and we'll go on to 6A, which is discussing the zoning map amendments for review as requested by municipal. This is what we would be having a public hearing on today. This will be postponed until next month. Do you have further discussion that you'd like to have on it?
I just have one question, and that is on the Bird Street properties. And why was the rezoning initiated through the town council rather than the owner? Am I mistaken in the way I remember this? That I think it was town council that.
You're right.
Initiated.
Matt, that is can be an issue either way. A property lawyer can apply to a reason. If there's something else that they want to do with the property. Or the town council can initiate a rezoning in order to advance the town's policy.
Right.
So in this case, the comprehensive fund and the adopted small area plan.
Right.
Called for a different reason on that parcel. That's not industrial. So this team is good at times any, the funding limitation to go ahead and make that map amendment. We don't want that property to be industrial forever. That's what I am going to say. So for the town council to be proactive in staying, you know, to protect it from anything industrial happening, that's what I have in mind.
Yeah, I was wondering about the impetus, what was like, was it one of those? And this should have happened already, or let's just do it since there's not really a lot on the docket. Let's just get that done and then we can move forward.
Yeah, maybe no time like the present, but one does wonder, the factory's been closed for 10 years. I think that no company could do one of those, like, industrial.
Right.
Why didn't you get done with that?
Okay, thank you.
Regarding the lots that are owned by people that are getting invested, have they been, I think we talked about this a little time ago. They're on the ward, may they be consulted or they?
That's right. There's not, no objections from our property. The poor notification that we missed though, was the law requires that they chase and property. And that's, that's common sense. If something's happened, it may be a problem, just as you.
Absolutely.
And that would usually generate most of the traffic at a public hearing like this, so.
Yeah.
So that's what we need to do best.
I will just say again, town council had advertised, expecting this to happen tonight, has already advertised their public hearing for the 21st. So Josh, like you say, we can kick everything to next month and we'll tell Plan, we'll tell town council that we'll try again in July, if that's what you guys would like to do. But as I said earlier, we can still make the advertising requirement and get the certified mail out this week. If you guys would like to call a special meeting on that same day as theirs, the 21st. Up to you.
I mean, again, I'm going to be there either way. So if everybody else can make it and we could just keep the advertisement as is with the town council. That would be great. I mean, if you have other conflicts, then that's understandable. But I would say, let's keep it on path if we can, yeah.
Yes, I think that's good.
It saves the town a little bit of money too, not having to re-advertise everything.
Sure.
We consider doing that, like, on other items too. If I, like, you know, less meetings we have to, I think it'd be the public board, they're all done in one day.
Especially on bigger changes or more numerous changes like we have in front of us. Probably wouldn't happen to.
I think Lisa brings up a good point because we do want more participation from the public and to avail a situation that would, you know, make it easier for them to do that. We get more participation, that would be good all the way around, I think.
It's nice for the council to see you all, you would you.
We did a few of those when Matt and I first started. We had one or two. I forget exactly what the issues were, Josh, maybe you can remember, but.
Yeah.
Plan things? Yeah.
Yeah. Trying to think of just how many, but, I mean, the, it was right when we were finishing up. If it's something controversial, instead of like, planning commission about something, council has some, like, purple that they're sending back. You're going to be doing that for four months. But you're doing what you got at this.
I think the position of devil's advocate, you adhere to that, is if it is something controversial, sometimes you want the two-week gap to, you know, have time to really consider the things that are brought up in the first public hearing before you get the other decision. There have been certainly somewhere, some part of a community shows up and gets a decision a certain way at a Planning Commission meeting, and then a whole lot more of the community hears about that and shows up and changes the decision at the town council meeting two weeks later, so.
So can I just ask, just for some clarification, still around the tire plant? So we're, we're changing the tire plant wetlands to public. And then we will potentially be rezoning the upper portion of that lot to residential. And so then does that just leave the tire factory itself to be dealt with at some point in future? Or are there different parcels of land still left in that?
You're right. On the, on the picture that's in here.
Yeah.
This one works out to purple.
Yeah.
So we're dealing with the top and the bottom belt of that purple area. So basically, it's the thirds where the bottom, very closest to the river, is proposed public.
Right.
The top third, it's touching the yellow area, we change the yellow old map. The bottom third, we change the green, which is public. And then the middle core would remain purple. Instead of all to the industrial.
Okay.
Maybe we then have to look at, okay, what's the more industrial one? Would you maybe prefer commercial, industrial, mixed, something else?
Okay.
It's a little harder to study.
But you could put multiple layers of zoning on that individual remaining parcel as well. If you wanted part of it to be commercial and part of it to be something else, something new or something that already exists in our zoning, you could, you could split up an individual parcel into multiple things.
Okay, and do an official overlay? Is that what you're saying?
Not overlay, a split parcel only. We can take a big parcel.
And divide it. Okay.
A little trickier talking. Different pieces of it.
Yeah.
But that's all.
Okay.
This one, I would go ahead and ask, first, are there any other comments regarding the zoning amendments? Questions, concerns? Correct. But then I'll go ahead and ask if you would like to go ahead and say, well, especially with council at their public hearing? Okay?
Yes.
Do I need to vote for that or should we just call for a hearing? Do I hear a motion?
Motion that we postpone the public hearing on the rezoning items to join the town council meeting on July 32nd, 3rd.
I second the motion.
All voters?
Hi.
All votes? Motion passes. So with that being said, we remove down to number six. So I'll give you a big, so I will be leaving as of tonight. I don't know how that works, it's at June, so.
You have to come back.
You're like, oh, God.
We wanted you one last time, Josh.
Um, yeah, do it up with the town council. So we will be needing to have a seat filled with, because also July, so usually around this time we have a monthly, a member that's, people come up also. I don't think that was my seat filled was coming up already. Do you have the list, what seat come up? So you got a closer end, please.
Looking for the Planning Commission roster or the town council one? I didn't quite hear the question.
I have the Planning Commission roster, but my copy is older. I'm not, I'm not clear who, which position.
I feel Duffy's.
Yeah, I can tell you the title of order. So. Oh, actually, yeah.
Yes. I had no idea.
On my computer in the office there, I'm digging through my emails to see if I sent myself a recent copy.
Yeah. Yeah, so then you would have a place on screen there. Then you would. Yeah.
Just been here since January, so. I don't know who was, I don't know who was there before me.
Is this an out? Now that you've said it.
I've got it, okay, let's see. Josh, you are on your actual term that will expire June 30th of 2024. You just started a brand new one when you got off of town council.
So available.
To answer the rest of everyone's questions, Shannon, we need to get you reinstated as well. Your term from Duffy actually ends this month. I'm glad we're talking about this now. Lisa, your term from Randy will end this time next year. And then that leaves you, Sherry, who got Lindsay's old seat when she left. So that had one year on it before Lindsay moved to town council. And that will be up this time, 2023.
All right.
So one, two, three, four, Josh has got the longest one left, yeah.
When does mine end?
You have a town council seat, so you're on this as long as you are on town council.
Okay.
Okay.
The idea is that we staggered that one half of the years.
Oh, wait. Oh, sorry.
And Shannon, that means your term is up here, and I'm sorry to spring that on you tonight. If if you would like to continue on the planning commission, as you see, there's not huge clamoring for open seats and we can. Just. Re approve you at town council next month and, you know, you'll never miss a beat. You want to take this as an opportunity to reconsider, you're more than welcome to, and we will. Search for other people.
Hope I'm good.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
City council members and because they will.
Oh, great. I think I did a meet and greet when I came on. Okay, yeah, I did the meet and greet when I took over Duffy's.
That's so good. You may give us your competitive pressure. Yeah, I did back in the month required. So we posted that and we did get one state.
Certainly. My name is Matthew Johnson. I've been living in Scottsville, Rockford for coming up on two years now, but I've lived in the area for quite some time since two thousand and one. I moved here after I had a went to Radford University for my English degree. And I'm here because I've found this community to be honestly quite excellent. The area is beautiful. The people are very much likewise, and I've found an opportunity to be of service and I would like to be a part of that.
Thank you. I have more.
You can get the town drunk and then make them approve our.
I can do that at the burrow. It's very, very.
How we move our meetings to the burrow?
I could have done that.
Tap takeover.
I am on the statement of interest that was referenced as well.
And are you a Linter? Are you gonna be a Linter member?
I do, yes.
Yes, that's a that's an interesting part of the laws on planning commission. They specify. Some interest in having both property and tenant matters on this. All all of your members have to be residents within the town. And it can't be one hundred percent interest. It has to be some property interest here. But it's interesting, the law will there that it mentions having both vendor and property. Interests on this body. Alright, are there any other questions? We're clear on our goals moving forward. Our next thing will be using your business for comprehensive planning context presentation by our intern Andy.
It's I've heard every way you could have both pronounced. It doesn't even matter. Uh, yeah, or we just either one, really, truly. I can turn my camera, well, whatever.
It's just me, Andy, don't worry.
Thank you. Thank you so much for joining us here. We've had, we've had pretty good success with summer internship. He was the first one to join us from VCU's graduate coming school, although a couple of our commission members have attended continuing education at VCU's program. So on, maybe you met some professors. But I really appreciate the time you have given us to share some extra perspectives around the state. Andy has had some both research and resident engagement in Richmond's planning processes. So I'm interested to compare this a little bit, force the scale differently, but we were able to write a show some new advice on. What we should be aware of as we think about.
Yeah, thank you for that introduction. It's nice to meet all of you. So I'm in my, this is my first year at VCU's program. It's a two year program. Master of Urban and Environmental Planning. And Matt and I basically had a conversation about Richmond's master plan process and. Thought it would be helpful to just kind of do a little overview. I'm sure people's understanding of a comprehensive plan. Some people probably are very familiar with it more than I am, and some people might not know as much about it. But we just kind of thought while I was here, it made sense to. Pull some resources together for you guys so that when it's time to update it in twenty twenty three, it won't be. Super overwhelming because it can get very overwhelming. So for those of you who aren't familiar, every locality in Virginia is legally required to make a comprehensive plan. And the code of Virginia kind of outlines what should be covered in it, so. It's not like you have to decide exactly what's going in there, but ranges from everything to transportation, housing. Services, historic areas, capital improvements. So that is kind of the legal basis. That being said, it's legally required, but it's not a legally binding document, which is important to kind of understand the role it plays. So this is a little chart that Richmond used in their process, and I thought it did a really good job of. Kind of breaking down, it's kind of hard to see, sorry, but I can send you guys a link to this and you're welcome to look at it later, but. Who exactly is using the master plan and what they're using it for? So. Obviously, your town staff is going to be referencing it when they get, you know, proposals. You guys are going to be referencing it if you get special use permits. You can kind of point to your comp plan and say, you know, our language says this, we will or will not approve your special use permit based on the language in it. And developers and builders are going to be looking at as well. They're going to see where you guys want them to buy land or not buy land. So it does have a really important role, even though it's not necessarily legally binding. Yeah, how do I do that? Not like that. Yeah, I don't know.
It could be a little bit more plus.
Okay, well. I can go for your own, just city administration staff or town for you guys. Identify areas for growth, protect constituents from unacceptable growth. So it's not just about growing, it can also be about protecting you guys from growth. Strengthening neighborhood centers, public investments, capital funds. Developers, architects and builders are purchasing real estate, deciding whether it's most appropriate to reuse or construct new buildings. Identify where development is going to be happening. And align these design and development ideas with the goals that you guys outline.
That's a good point about the real deal, which if I get, if I get a call from someone who's in my property. And I tell me, hey, hey, I want to change the property, I want to do this on, is that okay? And I can't honestly dance for I'm. So I usually just send them out the next time and maybe point to some excellent. This is what we have. So if you want to follow something, this is how we need to justify it. It is this what we said. So when you're proposing jumper, I don't see jumper in. If you're proposing bakery, bakery specifically, say the one bakery, so.
And then it's also helpful for residents and business owners who are kind of deciding where to start or relocate a business, purchase real estate. So, yeah, just different ways that it helps. It's a tool for different kinds of people in the process. And then just where you guys are right now is that it was, you're kind of in between, so it's updated in twenty eighteen and you guys are due for an update in twenty twenty three. And as we know, zoning ordinance and map updates are occurring that align with the most recent version of the comp plan and the small area plan that you guys recently did. Yeah, so just kind of looking ahead, figuring out how the process is going to work.
But only around was all I need to. The three of us. I would say the sooner you start on it, the better. The three of us, we did a complete overhaul of the comprehensive plan, but I believe it, for the most part, stayed the same before we all.
Yeah. Yeah, and then that's what the slide was talking about. So for example, in Richmond, their update was in twenty twenty, but they began in twenty sixteen. Obviously, the scale is different. It's not going to take you guys four years, but. You can be thinking about the pre-planning process and how you want to develop it and how you kind of want to get to the final point now, not to stress anyone out. It's just be fun and helpful, but. And then just kind of how a plan is created, things to keep in mind. Obviously, you guys are smaller localities, you don't have a whole planning department like Richmond does that is working on this. But I do know it, a lot of places do bring in consultants or outside help. It does cost money. And that's just a conversation that maybe needs to be had sooner rather than later of how much you guys want to budget for an update like this. I don't think it has to be crazy expensive, but it could be worth, I mean. From what I can tell, it it could take up all of your time, probably doing an update for a month or two. But you guys have other things going on, so. And then this link at the bottom, I thought was just kind of a good resource for how you. It was just how preparing a master plan for your locality and just kind of talks about how the budget's going to depend on your scale, but. It is something to consider.
In Richmond, they.
Yeah, although then they backtracked on the consulting for community outreach, because that one over poorly enrichment, having an outsider come in and do community engagement didn't go very well. But they figured that out throughout the process, but they did bring in outside help. It wasn't just their planning department.
I would say we did some of that on our last one as well with the mixed use, mixed income study features pretty heavily in our comprehensive plan.
Cool. And then the other big piece is. Now, I don't, it didn't used to always be this way, but community engagement is a pretty big part of a comp plan update and. It should be reflective of what the community wants. You know, it's not just. Me sitting here telling you what should go in your comp plan. So the takeaway is I don't think the numbers from the slide are what matter, but just kind of the different types of engagement that happened in Richmond. They had an advisory council, they had a working group. Staff and then involving specific civic and stakeholder groups. And this is just another graphic that Floyd put together when they did their update. And I thought this was, they did a request for a presentation if a community group was interested, so kind of focusing it on. Groups instead of hoping that everyone in the town pulls out a survey or anything, you can kind of target who you know is going to want a seat at the table. So involving the community can involve anything from creating flyers and graphics for the website, having public meetings. You can bring people in to do mapping, online surveys and in-person surveys are obviously used very frequently. I think focus groups and then kind of what I said earlier, involving. More specific groups that you think would be interested is a good way to get kind of quality feedback instead of just someone clicking through and then questions on a survey.
It was what to me, reflecting on a long process and small area kind of process here, that feels like one of the most important parts of the beginning. Making sure. You've got the proper diversity represented at the table, otherwise the draft is going to come out wrong and you're going to hear it from people who weren't anybody. From. This doesn't quite use.
Yeah, and having those conversations now, if someone's worried about something, you say, oh, we're actually only doing our comp plan update in a couple of years and you're going to be able to. Just keep an eye out for a survey, so knowing about that as early as possible. Richmond, they did an advisory council, which I mentioned earlier, and I thought that was. Helpful just because it brought in people who were familiar with planning, but also people just familiar with real estate or historic preservation or law, or people who knew nothing about planning, and then those people. Were out there through the whole pre-planning process and they kind of. Spoke for certain groups within the community and brought in different expertise, and then you kind of get more legitimate engagement. Throughout the whole process. And that's an opportunity to kind of. Figure out diversity, make sure you're getting a balance mix of the people that you were just saying. And then these are the last three slides. They're just kind of overall takeaways that when we were going through it, I thought stood out and were helpful for Richmond's plan, so. The vision statement is typically included in the comp plan and that gives you. You know what the locality is going to look like when the next update occurs and kind of provides justification and framework for the goals outlined in the plan and. Richmond did this little graphic on the right. What? Yeah, I guess you can't read them. So it says, six-year-old Isabel lives in a home that is affordable to her single parent Alex, her baby sibling, tons of nearby daycare. Her grandparents downsized, but they can still live nearby in an apartment above their garage. So people moved from DC to work in the startup scene. They live in a nearby apartment. Her mom has a wage, like a living wage, opportunity to commute by transit, by bike, so. Instead of, I think with this vision statement on the left, it's just a bunch of buzzwords that I think honestly can turn people off sometimes. And kind of focusing it on growth, I think can turn people off sometimes to what's going on in the comp plan, but. I think that this is more of a kind of inclusive, accessible and less polarizing way to kind of create a vision statement for the town. So I just thought that was interesting.
You have some good statement. Wes Charles, president, favorite around the state. They probably chart out something like that.
Yeah.
Do you mean, how do we, how do we split that? Yes, we want more of these things.
Yeah. Yeah, and it, yeah, I don't, like, what does being sustainable mean? I mean, different things to people and it's so overused, so. I just thought that was an interesting way to do that. In terms of mapping, maps are a big part of a comprehensive plan and you're obviously going to have your zoning and your land use map. But it doesn't have to just be those traditional maps. So this example on the right is a walkability map of Richmond, and so. The red ones are car dependent and the blue is called like Walker's Paradise, so. Just kind of identifying, I think, earlier in the process what your guys' goals are and then using maps. To achieve those. So if you want to focus on revitalization, you might want to make a parcel map, and if you want to. Kind of focus on walkability or safety, you might want to do some more participatory mapping, have people come in and just like draw maps themselves. So it's just a tool that can be used in different ways. And then the last thing is, there's typically an action table. Richmond's comp plan has this very many pages of. Broken down the action steps and then what goal, I guess you really can't see this, I'm sorry, but this is whichever goal it relates to within the comprehensive plan. It identifies the lead. So is it the planning department? Is it the Department of Public Works? Is it the regional planning group? And then a timeframe, and then we were talking about, you can add like a cost, a cost column onto there to figure out, you know. Which ones you want to prioritize and how you want to break that down. So that's all I've got. I hope that wasn't too long. I hope it was helpful for you guys. Obviously, this presentation, yours and the resources are in there if you want them, but just. Generally thought it would be helpful to kind of give you guys some stuff to think about before you go through the process in a couple of years. Okay, we're gonna do that. Cool.
So, yeah, that was really helpful for me because I was thinking, we've already got a comprehensive plan, so probably just need a couple of updates here and there, but. What I understand now is. The engagement part is important because we might have different goals for the next time period that we have and accomplish. But it might be just to know where the current content of the plan is, what we've achieved. And our progress on those goals and then take it from there. But just know what I think you could have.
Yeah, that's a good point of like looking at the last one and where you guys are, so.
That's what you said. You said you wanted to try to do questions over in the next five years, that's about communication.
Right.
So I made this into a lot of.
Yes, exactly.
So we said twenty eighteen, that was when it was voted in. Okay, so we started that. A year, two years ahead of time, so, you know, there's not, there's still work to be done, too, but. I would recommend next.
But, um, I would recommend next year starting, not waiting till the 2013 rolls around and then.
Yeah, um, Charles does maybe act later in the process. I've probably seen some headlines about their appointment. Some controversy now because they published some recommendations that's generating a lot of people coming involved. Oh, I didn't know you were working on this.
Yeah.
I'm on the lister for my old neighborhood and the emails are flying. Like, oh my God, delete, 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 delete. There's like 80 emails a day. Insane.
Um, I, if I could just add, I think Annie made a great point about the, um, usefulness of outside help, not only in answering questions, but you know, sort of figuring out what questions are. Both of those are kind of equally important, uh, parts of this process. I think for the last comprehensive plan, we knew that, um, growth and development was going to be the focus. And so we were able to bring in those consultants to help with the mixed use, mixed income study that answered a lot of our questions about what type of growth and what type of development. You know, whether that was commercial growth or residential growth, you know, what did it look like? Um, if the data is old and needs to be updated or the question is old and needs to be updated, those are both big parts of that, that, you know, there are outside organizations that can help with.
And how much of this process do we control and how much of it is town council? Is it the same, the small area where we kind of drive it and we set recommendations to them?
Yeah, exactly. In the, in the state law, there's some detail about pretty much the table of contents will have to be in the land. And and planning commissions legally responsible for shepherding this draft through and sending something to the council. Now, council has some control over things like the consulting budget, whatever sort of you have to work with. But, um, looking at the whole plan, making the budgets, simply by mission. So you can set that and bring, how many meetings do you want to have when you want to.
Doesn't need to be finished by the end of 2023.
The attorney general's not a, I'm not really. Delay by a hundred of years.
I I don't believe that our last issue before 2018 was 2013.
Okay.
So the five years, five years has been there, but it wants to.
Yeah, now the question, uh, delaying, just a question of how rigid is the finish line? So.
What council does have, they do vote on it. So they do get a chance to put in things that they want. So they're all going to be the kind of, you know, the day for council. So if you want to see this, 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 they can show it back at the point.
Yes, Richmond, um, a lot of the council people there are kind of trying to put in amendments right now. But that's kind of problematic because it was through this process of engagement that it happened. And now they're kind of just throwing things. We're, is enrichment at least reflecting a lack of original participation and understanding by the council. But that's, that's specific to Richmond right now. Um, but there is an opportunity to amend if anything needs to be changed.
You guys do include in this whole.
Um, I think, well, I I just all of my courses have vaulted in somewhere or another. So, yeah. Um, but I was participating more as a resident of Richmond in the process, um, so giving feedback on things. Uh, but it's the same, I mean, you know, allows for voices to get heard. And you need more, I mean, there's different types of people in any locality and they all need to be heard. More renters often in Richmond is an issue we're having. So, yeah. Yeah, I hope that was helpful. But and not to say that obviously Richmond is a different scale than Scottsville. But in terms of what you can look for, for ideas, you can pull whatever you want out of it if you want to take a look at their document. I don't mean to say like this is how an ideal plan, it's going to be different for each locality. So, yeah.
But Richmond is almost finished. Charles's might not be finished for the time soon.
Yeah. Yeah. It's there for you guys. Cool.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
So I guess we would maybe need to discuss further about if we felt we needed outside help. And if so, how it goes into the budget and that probably has to happen again to the budget at the venue, right? So that is maybe something I'll start thinking about, so that's maybe the first part, I guess.
Um, yeah, we're, we're just about to start the new fiscal year. And comp plan doesn't need to happen in the year before next year. So, um, December, telling town council that they were thinking about a comp plan update. And here, then we might be consulted how long, how much that's going to cost. Then we can use that in other qualification because town council is not thinking about that this year and didn't provide that kind of time. But next year, this time next year, planning commission will want to have that to to go.
And I would, sorry, go ahead, Josh.
That would be in your corner, counselor, bringing that to him, um, starting in March. This one like, there is more.
December.
May, but it starts getting actually.
I was good. Yeah.
I knew it was like the cold one, so we, like, just like when we put our question in.
Right.
And then it was finalized, it starts to do a lot.
Probably better for us to discuss sooner rather than later because I feel like we do have the next almost five years kind of mapped with the funds that need to go through from American Rescue Plan. So, yeah, definitely something to.
And sometimes the question.
Right.
How, how much engineering happened per day or any one of the kinds of question.
Right.
And I would just also add, we, we do have a pretty good model, I think, coming out of the small area plan for some amount of small-scale staff outreach on the community level. Um, that if we have basic questions about, uh, you know, what are the questions we need answered? I think, you know, given the right, uh, time and and outreach, Matt and I could set that up at Victory Hall or at the library and and run those, you know, group meetings and with questions set by planning commission, you know, be able to go through a very initial phase of establishing what we might need consultants for, uh, if, if at all, you know, through that kind of outreach in-house.
The, the small area plan was a good, uh, good, good learning curve for this, I think. So, okay, ready, Bill?
Um, if I could look back around before we adjourn on, uh, just the technical stuff of, um, upcoming vacancies. Um, if you guys care to, you, um, if we want to have people in place for, uh, your meeting on the first Monday in July, uh, town council will need to, um, approve those nominations on the 21st. Um, you guys are doing a special meeting now on the 21st. So if you'd like to do nominations as part of that special meeting, you could pass those forward as well. Uh, but for Shannon's seat and Josh's upcoming vacancy here, um, if both of those people are going to be in place in July, we, we either need to do the nominations tonight or on the 21st before planning, I mean, before town council.
Thank you. So Thomas, would it help you this evening to have nominations or nominations?
I, I don't want to rush it. If you guys want to take more time to think about it, you have it. Um, because we can do it on the 21st. But if you feel like that's going to be a very busy agenda and you don't need further time, um, we could certainly get it out of the way tonight.
I don't remember a federal participating that did share you or check the nominee. I think that's a good state to sound like.
No.
Yeah.
I remember meeting, we, uh, to be.
Yeah. I wasn't that memorable.
Yeah.
It was all a blur. All of those Zoom meetings were a blur.
Well, I, I was before COVID because I came down to the town council meeting and introduced myself. And then it all got shut down. So, yeah, I think it was that fall before.
Well, up to you guys, however you'd like to handle it.
I'm going to make nomination for myself.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Uh.
Also, Thomas?
Can I make that an official motion to nominate my name?
I will make the motion to nominate Shannon back into, uh, planning commission and Matthew as the new member to replace Josh.
We will be sad to see you.
Yeah. Thank, thank you for all the.
Sure.
Uh, do I hear a second?
A second.
All in favor?
I.
All votes? Motion passes?
Lisa, was that you with the second?
Yes.
I'm sorry, what?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You were, you were putting the time in the works for sure.
Yeah.
And you're one of the better in council members who hire agents. Sharing the most perspective, uh, growing here, staying here and engaging service. Um, it, it sets a model that I would appreciate.
No, for the age of point. No, that's okay. Um, is there any other business to go for us tonight?
I just actually wanted to thank Matt for encouraging, uh, me to take the class for planning commissioners, um, you know, and all of that and the certification, which I just completed. There's 10 weeks of class and it's fantastic. That class is so good and so valuable. So if any of you have the opportunity to do it, I just highly encourage you to do it. It's kind of, if you don't have any background with those things, I could see where it would be uber helpful. But even somebody who has had that background, I just thought the presenters were excellent. And the teachers that came from VCU, um, Mike McKenzie, who oversees the process, just fantastic. And I did my practicum with the Richmond Planning Commission. So I got to sit down on theirs and see how they were, uh, doing their process. And they were working on those amendments to the comp plan, which was really informative and great to see how they were working through some of those issues. So the things you brought up tonight were definitely hot, but yeah, really helpful.
You know, you have this professional under of neighbors who are in the same boat all over the state.
Yeah. Exactly. There were 39 other, um, either planning commissioners or actually even people who were in staff positions with the different, um, cities that were in my particular class. And we broke out into breakout sessions and got to meet, you know, each other and talk about our different, um, you know, issues in our cities. And then also I was just going to give a shout out as well because we were given a lot of free resources. Uh, people that can help us with the comp plan and not having to pay for consultants, but other people who had volunteered to help those particular commissioners and city workers to do whatever we needed. And so they've already said they're willing to help. And so I definitely would be glad to reach out to them and say, hey, this is what we need. Can you give us some feedback and all of that? So absolutely invaluable, really, really great. And the 10 weeks flew by. So I just want to encourage you to do it if you can.
Was it still online when you were, did you take it online?
Yeah, we, it was Zoom, but, um, we did two intensive days. So we had seven hours of class in the beginning. And, you know, with the breakout sessions and the guest speakers and all of that. And then we had the, what, next seven weeks of just class with our, um, books being mailed to us and the assignments and all the tests we had to take. I think there was, um, nine different exams. And then you had to do your practicum. And then we came back for two full days again of class. And it, you got to write what you wanted to see from the first class being answered in the last classes. So it just really was fun to see how much people love their towns, you know? I mean, it just, everybody's so invested that was a part of it. And it's really fun to see that, you know, and just see the level of commitment. So anyway, just wanted to say that. And thank you. Thank you for offering and thank you to the city council for paying for it. That's great. And any other further classes I'd love to take. It really gave me a lot of great ideas, I think, to be able to share and jump in and help. So, yeah.
When is the next class running?
Yeah, they didn't say. So I, I don't know.
We'll try to find that and circulate it.
I have a question about, um, just kind of following up and maybe starting a new initiative. When you, um, were talking about different maps that might help us in the comprehensive plan updates. Um, you mentioned if we wanted to focus on revitalization, we could get, you know, to work on an empty or vacant property map. Um, can we start tackling those kinds of issues now? And, um, start figuring out how to get some of those vacant storefronts filled? And, or, you know, barefoot country store filled and like, you know, the flagship stores that you see on either end of the town when you enter and leave, um, just, I just want to see some new businesses moving in.
Great, thanks.
Yeah.
I think, so yes, we can start on that now. And we can put the planning map and direct with the headquarter and the others.
Right.
Good opportunity for that starts on Thursday. Um, Erin is Stan as a part project for this summer, which is focused on public arts in the importance.
Okay.
So she's got a, um, an MFA student from New York who's interested in public art is helping her this summer. So I got a little part rent on, um, Richmond out of it. Um, so they're going to survey and even call our data.
Oh, awesome.
Get your list and grant.
Okay.
And then try to deploy some suitable public art that makes sense in empty store fronts with the front lawn and empty building something that isn't, isn't, I mean, um, what, what makes these, uh, look more attractive?
Right.
Even though, um, because that's not the issue we, we definitely saw.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah.
Um, we'll see what we can get there for the next meeting.
Okay.
Maybe that, um, art student and team up with you.
Yeah.
Seriously, we'll get them together.
Yeah. Yeah, and if there's anybody from VCU or, you know, your class, you could help us figure out how to tackle revitalization. So what do we need to do in addition to starting with the vacant property map? What are some ideas, um, that we could generate to get the property owners interested in filling these spaces instead of just sitting on them in perpetuity?
Yeah, exactly.
I will say, I mean, I'm really impressed with the building that was one of the newer, um, Airbnbs that we had approved with the vacancy downstairs and now has the Riverbend boutique.
Right.
I mean, because that was, you know, just to have that new owner come in and then all of a sudden that space was filled fairly quickly. It would be nice to see more of that. Yeah. And I don't know if it came about from owner or just luck or happenstance, but, um.
Can be done.
Maybe, maybe it is worth reaching out to some of the other owners in that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be willing to help with that if, you know, you have some kind of commission you want to put together to actually go and talk to those owners and just begin to negotiate with them what, what we could do together to get those spaces filled and maybe get them to be a little more lenient if they're not interested in doing something, you know?
Some of it does seem like rumor.
Yeah, right. Exactly.
One of them trying to accomplish you.
Right, right. Yeah, what's your goal with the property? How can we see you maximize what your goal is and help the, the town to grow and be revital? And, you know, all those things. So, yeah.
Lindsay, you might. Everybody was holding off on selling because now it's the time.
Right.
Uh, Lindsay, I was just going to say you might, uh, extend an invitation to Stuart to come to one of the upcoming meetings. If, if you guys are going to head in this direction because it's sounding awfully, um, economic development-ish.
Okay.
I was going to say, is there already, have the economic committee done any sort of initiative on this?
Stuart is the Economic Development Committee. And so if, you know, it might be encouraging to him to know that there's, there's other interest and other motion. And, and I think the kinds of ideas that you guys are bouncing around, he would love to hear and and recruit around. Yeah. he would love to hear and, and recruit around, yeah.
Do you remember my times in school, they had a large group that they discussed. But I can't remember any of the outcome.
It hasn't, it won't do that.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, in addition to the map of the vacant properties, if we could get a list of who owns the vacant properties, that would be super helpful and contact information.
Not to add work to your plate, Matt, but also if you could let us know at some point what had been accomplished in the 2018 plan and to know what actually was done and what still is undone so that we can go back as a group and reexamine that and see if those are really the goals that we have for our future, you know?
If we're halfway through, we're not halfway through.
Exactly.
Looking, here's what we said.
Well, I think having gone through the pandemic, all of us, you know, may have different views of what our future, maybe should look like. And honestly, I think as a planning commission, we're really going to be remiss if we do not start realizing that that is not a one-off situation, that we could be revisiting something like that again, another kind of catastrophe to that level. And if we're really wise, we'll have that view of the future and not think that, you know, this was just some blip in the time warp, but really make a plan for what if that happens and what kind of community are we going to have with services that are here if we can't get out, if we can't access a larger community? Those kinds of things are really important, you know, and, and just looking at that. And the initiatives that are coming through Congress right now, like for solar and wind and all of these different things, because one of the hot buttons on, during the class, the last class that we had was about, these companies are now reaching out to smaller communities and wanting to buy up all kinds of farmland to stick these solar installations in them. And what do we do to protect property owners and, and actually use farmland that isn't really viable anymore instead? Or small installations and how, how does our community fit into that broader plan? Those kinds of things, you know, because our world seems to be changing so fast. We just have to have that view of a future that these things are happening. So, just a thought. Yeah.
We're still fighting for internet here.
I know.
This is where we should be.
I know. It, it, it's okay because we all start from where we are. This is the beauty about life, right? You know, there's lots of, that's why comparing us to Charlottesville or any other town really is, is foolish because we have to just realize we're our own town. And, and that's where taking the surveys and knowing our citizens and knowing their needs and knowing what their families need and that kind of thing becomes so important just really having a vital community. We don't have to compare ourselves to somebody else. We can just be the best Scottsville we can be, right? You know, and just taking that into consideration. So just some thoughts on that, but, yeah.
And about the, um, the master of the comprehensive plan from 2018, did we have some sort of public hearing where we say, we're going to, you know, halfway through, we're going to recap what we started with and where we're at? Is that where flowers would have that update, like a statement even for us kind of?
Council mayor, what kind of progress are you interested in sharing?
Well, that would be helpful, I don't think, to me, to start doing public hearing for a while. Something you haven't started working on yet. So you don't look at, like, you said, look at where you are in relationship to what you hope, where you hope to be of in 2018. Start planning at that point and then get down the road a little bit, then start doing what we're saying. It's what we, uh, think about doing and, uh, then you can ask for.
I think.
Those thoughts.
Yeah.
Right off, right off the start, in the summer. It's going to be overwhelming, all these ideas that people have, which way we should go, which should be going. You're the planning commission, you're supposed to come up with the ideas, let them, let the public figure out what they want to get about.
It might be helpful to set something up, independent page on a website about the comprehensive plan, just letting people know, change is coming on paper. And here's the current plan. Maybe once we get some more information on our belt saying, you know, here's a little summary about what it's about. These are our goals. This is what we've hit so far. And then, you know, every so often giving it an update, a, a place where people can come and say, okay, well, you know, it's not, not necessary, necessary for public hearing or input, but this is the information so far. Then once, once we get to that point where we can really start taking in the community opinion and making changes from there.
If it runs apart.
Right.
And then, by the way, I basically discussed, I don't think this is going to be a part of my.
Right. Right. And if, you know, if there's something they have a question about or want to comment on, here's an email address or, you know, call us.
So do you want me to reach out to Erin about the vacant plan or the vacancy?
I have a call here.
Okay.
On Tuesday.
Okay. Okay. Okay, great. Yeah. Okay, that's awesome.
Is there a contact for this GAN initiative that's doing the arcs?
Yeah.
Same person.
Erin.
Okay, perfect. That's great because I know my husband would like to be involved in that. Yeah, for sure. It's great.
She has an ARB email address I can give you. Give me just a second.
Yes, our sign director is also the consultant for that.
Okay.
We saw.
Uh, she is ARB3@scottsville.org if you want to reach out to her.
Are there any more comments, questions, concerns, if comfortable, blanking your sheet? All, anything else? All right. Do I have an emotion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn meeting. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes for adjourn. Thank you everyone.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you so much.